And I would entertain a motion on the minutes. There's two sets of minutes tonight.
Move to approve the regular meeting of Monday.
Is there any discussion on the minutes of January 13?
I have one. No, I'll keep my counsel.
Okay. There are no other discussions. I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions? And there's another set of minutes. I'd be glad to entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So move.
Second.
Special meeting of January 8, 2014. Any discussion? I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed or abstentions? Public communications. There's the public and there's also, we have Superintendent Lynn Cole with us tonight. Would anyone like to precede Lynn? Carol?
I have a couple of questions. I was wondering if the FY13 audit was completed? No, it is not. Not first draft? I don't have a draft, Carol. And then on page 38, the balance forward is a deficit of 273,805. And I was wondering, do I expect that deficit to be in the FY15 actual? When that FY15 year comes out, there's an actual. Will that be in that column? Okay, I'm sorry, Carol. On page 38?
Page 38.
The proposed revenues at the bottom, the balance forward is a deficit of 273,805. When that year ends and you did the column of the actual, will that deficit be part of the actual?
It will be, but that's half the deficit number.
So my next question is, when you go to the FY13 proposed budget, the balance forward included an estimate of FY11, which would be 545,244. And it also included a year ending of 148,005. So when I see the actual revenue, the FY11 that was in the proposed isn't included in the actual revenues, which I assume, well, I don't think it's an assumption, that FY11 fund balance of 600, I mean, 561,378 should have been carried forward and included as an actual revenue in FY13.
So we've discussed this many times, Carol, but that is money. So that was a fund balance that was most likely used in FY12 because those numbers are a year behind. So we've discussed this many times, but that's how that works. And I don't have my ideas with me. I only have the most current year.
Well, you know that we had a discussion on email with the chief auditor. And he was following it through that, sure, for instance, what I asked at the beginning, FY13 goes into FY15. And then that number should be in the actual FY15.
So I had not heard that from the auditor. And the request was not for this school. It was, the auditor made a request for Addison Central School. But we've had the discussion that by the time you get to the actual year, that fund balance has already been used by a prior year since it's a year behind. And it's a confusing discussion and it's one that we've had previously.
Right, and I've never been able to understand that. Because you said it was used in the previous year, but yet FY11 was included in the proposed FY13. So it went out two years later, which I totally understand because your fiscal year ends in June. And so the next year, you're in the current year until that year ends. So we are kind of a year behind. So if FY11 goes into FY13 as a revenue, no, I don't understand why it's not a revenue in FY13 actuals. And so that is my journey in trying to understand.
So Carol, let's look at FY13-14 because those numbers are right there. So we had a balance forward of $450,000 right there.
That's FY12.
Right there, FY, the budget for 13-14, that's right. So that's FY12's balance forward. We've used that balance forward. We offset the loss for FY13 against that. So that 450 is not available to us. It's not available to us now.
Oh, yeah. Then why would you use it as a revenue though?
Because it's our fund balance at that point in time. It has to be rolled in at some point.
Okay.
I think so. Not sure if it's going to be clarified for you, Carol, but it may for everybody else in the room. When you book a carryforward as a revenue or as a deficit, when you book that as a revenue, that's immediately a tax savings for the current, for the next year. And so that money is then no longer there because that money was spent to reduce the savings, or I'm sorry, to reduce the taxation rate. So with the deficit coming in, then unfortunately that increases the tax rate. And that's a different way of looking at this that maybe is a little bit more clear.
Yes.
Okay. My, you guys have to be patient, but I still don't understand.
Before you go on, I just want to ask if anyone else would like to speak in public?
So and then the last one. Yeah, the last one is just, I wonder if the current budget is in violation of 24 Vermont Statute 1523. Because I was at the meeting when the school board said that they had the right to take out a loan for a deficit without voter approval. And I'll just read it. "When a school district at the end of the fiscal year contemplated by Section 1683 of this title has a deficit unless the voters have voted to borrow funds to repay the deficit over a term of three years or less or unless a deficit has been refunded pursuant to Chapter 53 of this title, the school board shall add an amount sufficient to pay the deficit to its next adopted budget and report the total to the Commissioner of Education for the purposes of calculating education spending."
So Carol, I have an opinion from Paul Giuliani. He's a well-known school attorney in the state, saying that it's, there are, what you talked about, there are three options. It's not if you don't do one or if you don't do two. Of those three options, the school board gets to elect one of the three.
Would you like a copy of that one?
Oh, could I?
Can I just, and I'm just going to read the first paragraph of this letter. "It is my understanding that the district ended its most recent fiscal year with a deficit. The statute, 24 VSA 1523A, affords three alternative methods of liquidating a school district deficit: voter-approved borrowing over a three-year term, a statutory refunding under 24 VSA Chapter 53, or by default, the imposition of what is essentially a deficit liquidation tax in the next fiscal year. The selection among alternatives is made by the Board of School Directors." And then it goes on to talk some more about that.
Yeah, I would appreciate a copy of that.
And the letter says that we don't have to present that to the voters, given the method that we selected?
That's right.
Well, I would clarify that respectfully. We are presenting it to voters as part of the budget.
It's part of the budget.
Thank you.
It's not separate.
As a separate, one item.
And just to comment on that, I love this school. I really think it's going to make the taxpayers angry us. Because here, you're not, you didn't clarify in your report, it's not transparent that there's going to be two years and we're going to go into a deficit. And what does FY14 to me looks like it's going to have a deficit. I think we need to be transparent as overboard. Because I think our school's worth it, but I'm just afraid they're going to get angry with us.
Okay, thank you.
Lynn?
Thank you. It's always been a pleasure for me to be here. My name's Lynn Cole. I'm the superintendent of the Hannaford Regional Technical School District and the director of the Hannaford Career Center. And I'm going to start off tonight and then Mark Bouvier, our business manager, is kind of going to run through the numbers of the budget presentation and then I'll jump in on some bullet points in the evening very quickly. First of all, I really appreciate the administration at Addison Northwest and Virgin Union High School. We have a longstanding commitment to collaboration in the best interest of students. Virgin Union High School is the only high school that we have a presence on campus. We have a presence both in the ag program and in our engineering program. We're very proud of both of those. We have a longstanding commitment to, Mike talking at the wrong side of the microphone. I apologize for that. But we have a long-term relationship in terms of our faculties working together. The latest rendition of that is the Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics STEM Pipeline, which is to encourage more young women into the engineering, mathematics, and science fields. And we're working collaborative with Virgin Union High School on that project. So we're very proud of our relationship. It seems very seamless and the conversations that we have are always with students and programs first. So I wanted to state that. I'm going to let Mark do the budget presentation at this time. If you have any questions as we move forward, just please put up a hand and we can, we certainly want to have a conversation. Okay?
Thanks.
Mark?
Good evening. As Lynn said, I'm his wingman. Mark Bouvier, the business manager. And I've got a short presentation, a little shorter than previous years. So please, if you have any questions though, sometimes it's best if you just throw your hand up. If I can't answer them, I'll defer to Lynn and hopefully we get through here in short order. So our 2014-15 budget is $3,419,913. And the question always is, how does that relate to the current year budget? Well, it's a reduction of almost $96,000. And Lynn will touch upon some of the bullet points that address some of the reasons of that reduction. On a percentage basis, it's a reduction of 2.73 percent. Our budget summary and hopefully the sheets that I handed out. Just a synopsis of the variances, both in terms of dollars and the percentage. The first line is the budget, showing that reduction again of $95,907. Our local and grant revenue, we've got a slight increase there with some administrative changes that Lynn's going to talk about. That one up about 4.6 percent. Our state education grants, that is equivalent to what Virgin gets in the state education base grant plus another grant we call tuition assistance. And that is down. And the reason for that is our six semester average numbers are down. And when those numbers begin to drop, this is where we see the most significant decrease in our sources of revenue. And that amounts to $124,553, or about 7.3 percent reduction. The assessments overall, what we bail out to our sending districts. And the three catchment schools, of course, of Middlebury, Virgin's, and Mount Abraham. We also have students from Otter Valley. Some come up from Fairhaven District, Proctor, I think one from CBU. And that assessment that we send out is going to drop about 26,000 or 1.75 percent. The big kicker one, though, and here's where we see that impact of less students, is when we get to our tuition rate per FTE. And I would note that this is the amount that we assess out to our local schools. In addition to that, we receive 87 percent of the state education base rate. The 13 percent, you're asking yourself, well, where does that end up? That comes to the local school. And we get 87 percent. And that comes through a pass-through arrangement that the State Agency of Education works through. But so that coupled with the $10,352 is our total tuition cost for a student at the Hannaford Career Center. Quick bullet in terms of, well, what's the breakout of that? Just under 49 percent of our budget is in instructional programs. The programs that Lynn alluded to that take place physically right here at Virgin Union High School are part of that number. Our instructional support are really two components. That's our guidance department and our IT department. And they represent about 9.47 percent. The board and administration, $650,000, and that's 19, a little over 19 percent. Bear in mind, one of the numbers in there, about a little over, close to 60,000 now, is money that with this arrangement on the ag program, we get to count the students, but we return the 87 percent back to Virgin Union High School. So each year Kathy gets a check from me. At the end of the year, we tally up what that number is over the six semesters and that comes back to Virgin Union High School. And that, as I say, is reaching about 60,000. Operation and maintenance transportation, a little over 600, almost 602,000. As you know, we have two campuses, one located next to the Middlebury Union High School and then our north campus, which houses our auto and diesel technology programs. And that's included there. And our transportation needs is primarily running kids to different field programs, occasionally a field trip. The schools bring in the kids to us in the morning and the afternoon. And finally, our debt is a little under 5 percent of our budget. That continues to drop each year a little bit on us. And that's for our north campus facility. And pleased to report that tomorrow night, or Wednesday night, our board will be signing a refi note on that. And we're going to actually save a little bit more interest. So Lynn, you want to talk about the votes?
So these are the pieces that we had to do within our budget. We have about 13 program instructors. We had to cut a program. So that's a 1.0 full-time equivalent teaching position. We are presently in the process of negotiation of both our faculty and our staff contracts. And generally, we put a contingency fund in there for that. We're going to try to balance whatever that happens to be within our general fund budget. So we've eliminated that. We have shifted our administrative structure where we are basically eliminating, it's going to end up to be about a .25 administrative position. What it is, is the assistant director. And we're going to change the job roles and combine cooperative education and adult technical education. Within that, our adult technical education has, for the last couple of years, saw a positive gain, which allows us to pay for some of that time out of there. Mark, next slide. Our health insurance, that is a set figure. It's the same that's in your budget at 4.5. We have put some extra funding into our budget, increased it to offset some costs that we will be experiencing or we anticipate experiencing with going online of the Vermont Healthcare Exchange. One of the biggest issues there is presently, we share the cost of a couple of our staff members' insurance policies with other school districts. It's our understanding that we no longer can do that. So we're assuming we're going to have to carry the full cost of those. That's the health insurance reimbursement. The other piece within the healthcare exchanges we've had in lieu of, so if an employee didn't take insurance, we've had some in lieu of payments. It's our understanding that we're not going to be able to do that. So we've included them to be able to cover them. So health insurance did go up quite a bit, even though that they maintain that 4.5 with VHI. The, probably the biggest thing that we did, a decision that we made, we had about $170?
Forty.
$140,000 in fund balance carryover from fiscal year 13. What we generally do with that is put that into a building and equipment reserve fund and we buy equipment and do building maintenance out of that fund. This year, A, it was considerably higher than we normally have. And B, we felt the need to reduce our tuition. So what we did is we used half of that fund to, as a revenue coming in to reduce tuition. The other half of that fund will be voted on at our annual meeting.
Is that the last slide?
That is it for you, unless you want to?
Okay. Oh, are there any questions on that? Building trades. We didn't really run building trades this year because we didn't have, but the staff position was in our budget. We didn't have the enrollment to run it this year.
Some of the talking points, and I won't be going through all of these numbers, so. But you can see our budget from 2009-10 and where we are today. Over to the far right is the state education base rate that we were using in our calculation. And of course, that's the number we multiplied times 87 percent. And you get down to the year 2012-13. You can see in 9, 10, 10, 11, 11, 12, the state did not change that number. And when we were preparing the budget for 12-13, Lynn and I talked it and batted around and said, you know, given their three-year batting average, I think we better stay with the 85-44. Well, they surprised us and changed it to 87-23. So we went to the board and said, look, that number's changed. And is it fair to continue to assess the districts that same amount that we sent them out in the budget? Or should we reduce it based on the fact we're going to get more additional state assistance? And they said, let's reduce it. So we actually changed the tuition rate. You can see it started out at $9,005 and was reduced to $8,812. And the assessment dropped roughly $35,000, which was the additional money we got from the state. The current year went up 2.8 percent. The other one that I called to note is the six semester average. And this is a number that continues to fluctuate. Our high was in the 2012-13 year when it was finally adjusted. It was 160.46. Next year, we're looking at 141.58. And that's the number that, you know, so much of our revenue is keyed off from. And the programs are there and the seats are there. It's just we don't have the kids coming in the door. Whoops, what happened here, Kathy?
Yeah, it's my fault.
Oh, geez, I saw. Don't you guys have a program in that?
A little bit bigger picture of the assessment rate per FTE. Again, I would note that this is not, does not include the 87 percent of the state education base rate. But you can see where we were in 10-11 at $10,180. We dropped to a low of $8,478 and we're a little bit higher than that 2010-11 figure proposed at $10,352. So even though we had a reduction in our budget, the reduction in those FTEs, those six semester averages, are resulting in an 8.5 percent increase in our tuition rate per FTE. So, questions?
We feel that pain.
Yes.
I just had one question. You talked about the north campus. There's more than auto and diesel over there, though, isn't there?
We have a small farm, Deep Roots Farm, which is part of our sustainable agriculture program. We are in the process of building a barn out there, but we have, we've raised chickens for several years. That embryology project was brought to Virgin's last year. I believe you had some chicken hoops out in the back. We process those animals through a mobile processing unit that the district owns. We do that for the Virgin's FFA also. We also have raised hogs. We raise a large vegetable garden. We partner with a group called Midsummer, which is a low-income children. That basically, it's a camp that they do recreational activities and they get two meals a day through that camp. And they work, we also have interns from Middlebury College that work on that. So that's, and our forestry and natural resources work on that land and a bunch of other things.
Is there solar out there too?
We have, we have a solar array. We have, and we also, all of the fuel, not fuel oil, but all the fuel used for tractors and those kinds of things is generated through a biodiesel plant that we have on campus out there. Yes?
Looking at the slide that breaks out the components of the budget, I note that board and administration at $650,000, 19 percent of the budget.
Yep.
Our board and administrative costs for this high school are under $500,000. What's included in that $650?
Well, it includes all of the central administration also. I think you're looking at just your high school administration that's included in that. So if you added that in your SU as well, because we're our own SU. We don't pay anything. All the board expenses and so things like workman's comp. The other big one is there's a $60,000 reimbursement back to Virgin Union High School that is included in there. I think, so all of the business management, superintendent, all of that's in there.
How many administrators is that? How many administrators is that? You and I?
The four? Three, plus, you know, some secretaries. So, there's a director, assistant director, business manager, and I think the receptionist is in there.
Your assistant.
My assistant.
And the bookkeeper.
And the bookkeeper. Okay, before I go, these booklets are at your superintendent's office. They're also at our office. I think they might have some over here at the high school. This is advertising, this is our annual report. Our annual meeting is February twenty-sixth at seven PM down at the Career Center. Everyone from this SU is invited to that. You're all members of our SU also. The other thing that I would also like to remind, we have a board member that's rep, that is elected at large from Addison Northwest, and that person right now is Bill Scott. Bill is not, has informed me that he is not reapplying to run. So, and that, that position is elected at your annual meeting, so I hope that you have that on your agendas to do. So, any other questions that you have from Mark or I? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have an educational presentation here or is not? Board communications. Anything from the board? Jeff?
I'm looking at our hard-working clerk. Were you able to do a thank you note?
To the letter to the editor? I did not. Instead, in the budget fact, which will be part of my board communication, I, like the first thing I say, but no, I did not. Because your hard-working clerk was too hardworking on other aspects of the school stuff.
Would you like to still see that, Jeff? I feel like there's a hanging request out there.
I think it would be good form to thank the public for their support of the bond. I appreciate that the sign's been out on Moncton Road. That's part of it. I think something in the paper would be a good idea.
You know, I just put, just for what it's worth, it really felt to me, as we came out of the last meeting, that, well, it makes absolute sense to put something out publicly. The timing felt a little bit weird to me, especially with questions about how the deficit information emerged coincident with our movement of the bond forward. So, I just, and we chatted a little bit about that, so I sort of backed off on that commitment. But I worked hard on this other thing.
Anything else from the board?
Sure, yeah. So, I just want to mention, and we will use, we'll talk about how to use it during our next part of the agenda, but I did, on behalf of the board and with input from everybody and with great thanks to you, Kathy, prepared a budget frequently asked questions document of two and a half pages, which we will talk about how to strategically circulate to the voters later this evening, but there are copies of it in this room if anybody would like to see it. Does a nice job, I'd like to hope, of breaking out how things fall out with the budget this year. Although I do want to say, I really liked the budget breakout that I just saw right there. Instructional, administrative, this, that, the other, it was kind of cool.
How do you spell deficit?
D-F-I-C-I-T.
D-E-F-E-C-I-T?
Ah, is the spelling of, is the spelling of deficit deficit?
Yeah. It's defec.
It's a different word.
Yeah, I know. I think you may want to change that before we post it. Probably, spell check doesn't probably go into the...
You know how you read, you work on a document for too long, and then you can't see the words on the page anymore?
They all look good.
Exactly, it's true.
Anything else from board members? And we'll move on to our student representatives. Who's first?
So, basketball season's underway, as we all know. There is boys game tonight. The boys are seven and nine, I believe, is their record, and they've got a game tonight against?
Milton.
Milton. And actually, that's where I'm going to be at Pet Band, so I gotta take off in a few minutes.
The girl's senior game is tomorrow, and they have two, what?
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I thought you were asking a question. They have two seniors this year, and their record is six and twelve.
More games later on in the week. Boys, Thursday. That's also the Pet Band senior night, I believe. And I'm not sure cheerleading, probably gonna have their senior night at some point. I don't know when that is. And then the boys have a game next Thursday as well. That's their senior game. It's home against Mississauga. Yeah.
Track states was this past week, and we took home one state championship. That was Chris Castillo, who took the state championship in the long jump. He jumped nineteen-six, which for any track uses pretty well.
We've got a math meet this coming Thursday at CVU. Not many more details on that. Day before Valentine's Day.
Student council has been working, kind of, on a school trip to Smuggler's Notch, which would be a nice break.
Right, not Jay Peak, like I had said, Mr. Cameron, but Smuggler's Notch. Sorry, sorry about the confusion.
Well, you won't be getting me to chaperone.
But, yeah, that might be happening. What they're hoping to do is, in the break, or in the school, the stretch of school between February break and April break, which is like eight weeks or something like that, they're hoping to take a bus up to Smuggler's Notch, and students would pay for their own ticket and then a small fee for the bus. That'd be a reduced price, though. I'm not sure if they've talked to you about that or not, but it's coming. So, you've been warned.
This is a bit of forewarning, perhaps?
And then, last Friday, was the Green Mountain District Music Festival. I think we had around fifteen kids between the middle and the high school participating. And I was there, and it was a big success, I'd say. A lot of fun and my last one. But it was good, and I think that's pretty much all we have.
Yeah.
How about the initiative you were telling me about earlier?
Oh, the student council.
Yes.
Right. We're hoping to attend, I'm not sure what you call them, any town meetings or anything, and kind of raise awareness from a student perspective about the budget. That includes sharing these frequently asked questions Mr. Cameron prepared, but also kind of like what we did in the previous meeting. Talk about what the programs at BUHS mean to us, and that's something that the student council and National Honor Society have both been taking active roles in trying to put together.
So, I'm not clear, where would you be doing this?
Any sort of local meetings. I don't have any specifically, and someone's looking into them. But if people are getting together, any town meetings, if a church is having like a dinner, anything where their community members are going to be present.
Or a re-lion.
Right. We just want to raise awareness.
No, I, I, I don't object to it. I just, I don't want to see students doing something that, I don't want them to be forced into doing something that they, you know, you know, it's...
I think the student council, National Honor Society, we...
What's that? No, 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 I understand that. I just, sometimes I feel a little uncomfortable that students are, you know, out there doing things like that. I think there's a fine line. I don't disagree with it, but I also don't like seeing, I mean, I guess I just don't like students be used in some way, as a vehicle.
Well, this is an issue that we, as students, feel pretty passionate about.
No, and I understand that. I just, I, there is a fine line.
I understand.
I mean...
This was just concocted by adults, I'd probably agree.
It's not.
It's a student initiative all the way.
I think we need to recognize that students have a voice, and we need to hear of them.
Right, no, I agree. I understand that, but there is, there's a fine line.
Be careful of those parents, they're pretty tricky.
Will do. Any other questions? I'm gonna take off.
Okay.
Go Pep.
Now, do you play with all four at a time?
Sometimes.
Yeah? Like a marimba?
I always have to have a stare.
Oh, okay.
Throw them up in the air and bounce.
Yeah, juggle.
Juggle.
Yep, thank you. Principals?
Well, first thing, that I, I need to ask the board for approval, because it's that time of year, in fact, it's a little bit over for public high school capacities for school choice under sixteen VSA, section eight twenty-two AC. It was done earlier, so I thought I'd do it again. That we have to set our capacities. Last year, we set the capacity for school choice incoming at ten, and I, under the advice of Superintendent O'Brien, I suggest to the board that that would be a good number.
Are you set for outgoing team?
We can limit how many come in.
But the money doesn't follow, so we're okay.
Yet.
Sort of.
Any, anyone want to suggest a motion?
I'm just curious that if ever, if every vote got to set the number that they, incoming, and money didn't call anybody, why would anybody have, why would they want to take students in that they're not going to get any money for?
Well, let's, let's have a motion on the floor here before we start talking about...
Move to set the maximum incoming choice and value number of students at ten.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All right, thanks. So, Chris, you want to ask your question again?
Yeah, so, why would we want to take anyone in? And, or do we have to take anyone in if we're not going to get any money for it?
You have to.
We have to, it's a law.
So, we get to set that, we get to set the number at some artificial number and we can decide?
Arbitrary. It's fairly arbitrary. I think we'd get some pushback if we said fifty.
What are other schools' numbers?
It varies quite a bit.
One, one thing we could do, Chris, is, is set the incoming and outgoing at ten. So, if we did lose, if we had ten kids come in and ten kids go out, it'd be a draw. No money would change. But, being the devil's advocate, you know, we have capacity, so why shouldn't we make it available? I mean, well, you know, I don't see anything, it's not like we would be taxing what we have, right?
I'd rather go here than a lot of places.
Yeah, so...
Now, if the money followed the student, you'd have your number, right?
That's right.
You want to welcome people in.
Yeah. How many incoming do we currently have?
Four? We have four? Three or four? More than that? How many so?
Six? Okay, but less than ten?
More than five.
Seems to satisfy the requests, all right? Okay.
That's a manual motion.
Yes.
So, if we find that we have more, we can change it.
Yeah, okay, good. Any other discussion? There being none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Or abstentions? Thank you very much. Okay?
Okay, I'm pretty sure tonight, the, we did have a really productive building meeting on Thursday, and Jeff was there, and we really, we really made a lot of progress on timelines regarding the demolition and the reconstruction of the kitchen, and the auditorium, Kathy was there, and putting the new bleachers in, the new basketball goals. So, we've got a pretty good timeline. They did find no asbestos in the ceiling, so we can start demolition on June second before school's over, and which gives us a better chance of having an auditorium to play with next fall. Did I misstate anything? Okay. I'd like to announce that Mr. Tim Maynes has notified me that he's coming back after a year's leave of absence.
Yes.
To teach, and he's excited about it, and I thought I'd let that cat out of the bag. And I don't know who, two Saturdays, one Saturday ago, Emily Martin, a sophomore of ours, who was one of the top twenty finishers in Bernie Sanders' State of the Union essay contest, went up to the public television studios at Fort Ethan Allen and took place in Senator Sanders' roundtable on the State of the Union, and participated well, really did us proud. She's articulate and direct, and the kids all did their best. It looked a little bit like deer in the headlights with, you know, with Senator Sanders and eight cameras on them, but, but they did a marvelously, marvelous job, and I have a copy of all the essays if anybody needs to see them. But just another little thing, it does our school proud, it makes really look good in public that we were one of the participants, so...
Steph?
Yeah, just thought it ended on good news.
We, just a couple of little reports. Carol Spencer, Joanne Tapley, Lee and I participated in a workshop put on by the Vermont Professional Learning Network, sort of a consortium of all the, the little, the networks that address the needs of the counties, and it was on calibrating expectations for Common Core state standards in the classroom. So, talking about how administrators can walk through and look for what they should be seeing around to meet the Common Core. On the flip side of that, we're also getting ready for the, you know, the balance. We're implementing Common Core into our curriculum, but we're going to be assessed, and we were selected as a field test site for the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium, the SBACK that you've heard, and that, the window for that starts as early as March. So, we're, the agency of Ed and the Test or Assessment Consortium have released preparation materials. So, all the teachers and the administrators in the district are looking through those, figuring out what we need to do to assess it. It's a dramatic change from the way we're used to assessing, which is, everybody sits in a classroom with a paper and a pencil and a booklet and a timer. And so, the assessments range right around between seven and eight hours, divided into parts. Some of it's computer adaptive, so every student needs to have access to a computer, and then some of it is performance-based within the classroom. And we don't really know what that looks like yet, but it's clearly something that the teacher's going to set the stage for. Students will be working collaboratively. They may be putting, inputting data, or they may be using computer resources to look at, an example is maybe read three different articles and view a webpage, and then compile that information into some sort of performance outcome that will then be assessed by the teacher. So, it's a, it's a pretty dramatic change, not only for students, but for the people, the teachers are going to be much more active in the actual assessment. So, we're, there's a lot to learn, and the beauty of the field test site is we get to practice for a year.
So, this is the new form of the standardized test?
Yes. It's a national assessment. So, I think, I don't know, forty of the states have signed on to this one, the other maybe nine or ten that are participating went with the park, was it park? Yeah.
So, no number two pencil and multiple choice fill-in-the-blanks kind of deal?
Nope.
And the emphasis is in English Language Arts is argumentation and persuasion and close reading, and in math, it's problem solving.
I can't wait to see how we end up doing on that.
But it's still, it's still literacy-based, even though it's a literacy-based assessment. Yeah, pretty, it's kind of exciting and a bit scary.
Seven to eight hours?
Over the course of the window, so each student will be assessed, which is similar in time to what they were, what they were done before, but it's much more active.
Didn't Steph have an opportunity to take it?
Yeah, and I think you remember in an early report, the, every faculty member, in fact, every adult in the district took the practice test in our Augustin service. So, the adults are, but it wasn't... So, the adults are, but it wasn't as, um, the computer adaptive part wasn't enabled at that point. So, students, the test will actually adapt to correct answers or incorrect answers. Ratchet it down a little bit to meet their needs, it'll give us a much more precise, uh, uh, assessment of a student's abilities because of that ability to, to tailor that part of the test. We'll see.
If they beat the test, it comes up and says you win.
Yeah, a lot of bells go off and confetti falls from-
And money comes out now.
So, um, we do this test for a year, then we do it, we implement it for a year. And then, we're looking back and comparing to the-
Nothing.
Other tests.
Nothing.
How do we do adequate yearly progress?
For this year, adequate yearly progress is calculated on last year's testing cycle. So, we'll stay static for a year, and that's, that's part of the bargain.
But-
Is that a good deal?
No.
But, there's also nothing to compare to, so you can't, it, it, they're messing, testing something different.
Understood, but just, you know, it sounds much more appropriate. But it also sounds like it's just gonna break our trajectory, you know? We've had the rudder over here, working towards this type of testing paradigm and all the while teaching the students to have these tools. And now, we're gonna throw the rudder over here, um, let 'em use the tools.
Many of us are arguing for a growth-based, uh, version of this, instead of a cohort-based version. And, uh-
Yeah, yeah.
You know, there's a lot of argumentation in the state for a grow- uh, a growth-based paradigm on this, which I think makes sense. Kids over time improve their performance, that's what we're in the business for.
Might be just throwing the rudder away. Well, just give 'em a rudder that stays in the same direction for a little while.
I've heard that before.
You know, the benefit of this, though, it's, uh, it, you know, I'm sure you know that states are allowed to set their own bar for whatever assessment they use to measure adequately yearly progress, adequate yearly progress. And Vermont's was rather high, it was maybe the second or third highest in the country. Many states had much lower bars, um, to measure, so there, it, it already was, um, apples to oranges. You couldn't say students in Mississippi were scoring higher, students in New York are scoring higher than students in Vermont, or, or, because it, it was all over the place. This is the same assessment that every student will take across the country, or in most states. So, it is a mu- a much more, um, comprehensive measure. And it actually, hopefully, will, uh, have, lend more relevance, especially to those, um, the jaded eleventh graders, because it can now be something that colleges could look at, instead of just saying, oh, you scored, uh, you know, a, you know, eleven forty-nine on your kneecap in Vermont, which has no bearing on, on a, a, a college. This could actually be a true measure.
By the way, you have a non-jaded-
A non-jaded, yeah, present company.
I just have a quick question. Here's hiatus from the testing, does it impact the Green Mountain Star's commission at all?
No.
So, you're, you're still on track for that deadline of two thousand and fifteen?
And the kneecap science assessment will still be in place, and I, I just read recently, I think it's through twenty sixteen. So, there is a kneecap assessment in the spring, and unfortunately, they, they're all gonna come to bear within the same sort of window.
Anything else?
No.
No? Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Yeah? Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we have kneecap prisons?
Well, they're the same as last year's, we didn't take them again. So, again, they, they just, because we didn't take them, because we're taking this in the spring.
Oh, okay. So, Mount Ave just got theirs, for example. The other schools all around the state just got theirs, we won't?
We won't, because we didn't take them.
Okay. Got in there this time.
Wonder what will show up on the recording site, the reporting site? We may wanna control that of the exempt.
I've already got the password.
Yeah.
Checked it out, and we got the teacher lists.
The media's making, media is referencing that to some degree, not, it, you know, it's really not an accurate measure of statewide results. And, um, the, uh, the new commissioner was actually the keynote at the conference that we went to last week, maybe it was the week before now. And, uh, and she said that she was really gonna hold the media accountable for making sure that they were accurately reporting and recognizing the fact that, you know, um, I don't know, maybe fifteen percent of the districts in the state volunteered to withdraw right on their, on their current scores in order to participate in the field test. So, it really does skew the state, um, you know, the, the performance versus, against the state.
Well, we may wanna do something proactively rather than waiting to see. Like the word exempt is a good, a good word, doesn't necessarily carry any negative.
Oh, it's a good thing.
Yeah. Anything else? Superintendents?
Kurt, I don't have a lot to report, but this might be a good time to follow up on the directive the board gave the administration at last meeting to come up with a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of additional reductions in the budget.
Okay.
And I think each board member has a copy of those proposals. And then Steph will walk us through that.
Some of these, some of these are franken placeholders. We could, we could bounce to another line, perhaps. Um, and that was sort of the open agreement with, of course, the music department. So, starting on the revisions, budget revisions from February tenth, two thousand and fourteen, we took five thousand out of the travel, the faculty travel line. Uh, five thousand dollars out of furniture and fixtures. The derriers of many of our students are going to be unhappy about that. And then, in music, uh, we took five hundred and fifty dollars away from the equipment. Uh, three hundred dollars from travel, two hundred and fifty from supplies, uh, forty-one hundred dollars from text, four thousand from software, and eight hundred from equipment. And those were the, uh, those are targeted by the music, uh, department themselves. I gave them the total, and they went ahead and broke it out the way they wanted to.
Just, I'm sorry, just so I can follow, so are the budget books that we have, do they reflect these changes?
They reflect, no, they don't reflect these. If you look at page, first page of budget-
I'm glad you asked that question, Jeff, 'cause that was something else.
I'm sorry. On page twenty-four, the very right-hand column, under instructional budget, you'll see a negative one twenty-five, Jeff?
Yes.
And that was a placeholder until we came up with the particulars. So, it's in there, but not in detail.
It's not in a logical-
Right.
So, that's line six-ten?
So, then we, uh, on line six forty, under science, um, took away their book budget with their agreement. Uh, and that's, uh, fifty-seven twenty-five. Social studies, line six forty, we took their book budget, and we're gonna strike a deal with, uh, the English department and maybe one further department to help, uh, augment to social studies who have a new approved course that they needed some text for. Um, Walden, uh, we debited out five thousand additional dollars in consultants and thirty-nine fifty in travel. They have the ability to change line items before it freezes, uh, as well, but they're very anxious to help us out. Library, we struck our book, you gotta understand how much this kills me every time I say the word books and we're cutting. It's just like, it's, it hurts, but four thousand dollars worth of books from the library.
And we had already taken, what, twelve thousand dollars worth of books from the math department.
And the math department volunteered up their books for this year. Uh, audiovisual equipment, two thousand eight hundred and fifty, and under the principals', um, line items, we took, um, five thousand, wait, we, we, ten thousand from credit recovery.
Leaving five.
Leaving five, 'cause we can. And, we think. And, uh, a thousand dollars out of travel. Operations and maintenance, we struck five thousand dollars from training, even though it's, it's kind of a fool's errand not to train guys in how to use chemicals and such. Um, so that's sub totaled sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five. Previous to that, we had struck, out of general instruction, we had struck a thousand out of mentoring. Uh, two thousand out of curriculum development, uh, three thousand out of dues and fees. World language text, we took two thousand dollars. It won't kill them. I'll let you explain the, the field work.
Okay. The, um, this was a slightly higher, uh, amount budgeted than the previous year, but that, um, spoke to the fact that we have, um, twenty-five additional seventh grade students who will be eighth graders the year this budget is in place. This is the field work budget, um, any field trips that they take, the end-of-the-year trip, anything to supplement that. So, um, if they, if they wanna present some of those, you know, pretty valuable opportunities to leave the building and, and, uh, have educational experiences, we'll probably have to do some fundraising or some creative financing with other areas. Um, you'll remember that we've hit the middle school pretty hard, we'd already cut point four of a, of, um, reading specialist there. And on the flip side, there's another, um, middle school. We're, um, cutting three thousand dollars for the curriculum development that I hope will, people will volunteer to show up for this summer anyways.
And I'll go on to explain, under operations and maintenance, uh, why we're cutting fifteen thousand dollars of heating while when we're eating seven hundred dollars a minute or something of it. Um, the improved efficiencies that are gonna be, that are being realized by the new plumbing, by the new tank system, uh, the condensate, uh, tank coming in July, those will make this much more efficient, and the calculation is fifteen thousand dollars more efficient. And, uh, so, we trust that. And we're taking sixty-nine hundred dollars out of operations and maintenance supplies. Um, and some of that is already being realized by a cut, a drastic cutback in the caustic chemicals we have to add to the boilers. Uh, extracurricular, uh, we took an, yet another five thousand.
From the thirty-three we'd already hit.
From the thirty-three we'd already hit. Uh, computer ed coughed up twelve thousand dollars, three hundred and seventy-five, um, voluntarily to help out, so we wouldn't cut a position. Um, then, uh, Steph explained the curriculum development, and then, uh, in general instruction, we struck another, uh, two thousand of supplies and five thousand from the budget for coordinators and teacher leaders. So, that totals a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in additional cuts.
Thank you.
So, could I just get a copy of the heating oil calculation? The savings?
The, the calculation was that they, the, the heating people told him there was gonna be fifteen thousand dollars minimum.
Okay.
I don't think there's a written calculation anywhere. I overheard it.
I, I don't want this to come out the wrong way, and, um, and I appreciate all the, you know, efforts that have been made. But, you know, now we're gonna have these classrooms, and I know we, you know, we didn't wanna cut a position, but what do they have to work with? I mean, I know, and I know that you can't answer that question.
Well, I can to some extent.
But I'm just saying, it's like, okay, we've got the staff, we've got some kids, but what are they gonna do?
Here's a hidden opportunity for us, and I, I, this isn't just blowing smoke, it is a hidden opportunity. If we have to use technology more instead of texts, it's probably going to be a boon to us, 'cause it's gonna force us to flip classrooms. Um, it's gonna, you know, which means that the kids go home and watch on, on their iPad, the less of the actual information for the lesson, come in the next day and work on that less, on that information cooperatively in class. That's, it's things like that that we're going to have to, and, and we're gonna have to, on top of that, I, I just want to urge everybody to check out what the House is doing on, uh, refina- on refinancing. That sounds funny. On the new financing proposals for ed- public education, which lies on flat income tax, much more than property tax, than graduated property tax. And so, one of the things I'm hoping, and this is really directly answering your question in another way, is that if we start cutting positions and programs this year, and all of a sudden, funding is much easier next year, and it's not gonna be such an onerous burden on the taxpayers, we'll nev- we, we will never get those programs and positions back.
Well, I, I mean, I don't mean to interrupt, but also we have to look, and I know we've talked about this many times, but the amount, the enrollments is going down, down.
It is, and, and-
You can't continually justify that we can continue to, to support positions when we don't have the population to put into the classroom.
And I'd just like to remind everybody too that, you know, I think Sue agreed with me on this, we kinda tracked it. It was like, what, four refs really? In the last nine years? Does that sound right? Went from five to four in English, five to four in science, five to four in social studies. Right, it was attrition, but it, it acted like a ref. We didn't replace them. So, I mean, we were out ahead of the curve, I regret it now. I wish I'd kept the five-person departments, so I could cut 'em now, you know, and make, I could be a hero. But, it's, um, that's something to keep in mind, we were out ahead of the curve doing the right thing, cutting back the staff for, for the last nine years. And, uh, loo- looking for inexpensive alternatives.
You know, enrollment declines, but until you get to sort of a critical point, it's one fewer in this class, one fewer student in this class, one fewer student in this class. It's not just twenty students, oh, we could cut a teacher. It's, it's how it kinda shakes out of, across the curriculum as a whole, so.
Yeah, but, we, we are a percentage point higher than the state average in, uh, student-teacher ratio, for instance. It could be larger. We could have a bigger spread, but we are above the state average. State average is ten point seven, we're eleven point seven.
Well, hopefully, we all have to have that competition this year.
Yeah, I hope not.
Anything else for the principals? Okie-doke, superintendent, I mean, not principals, sorry. Kinda went back and forth there. Did you have anything else, Tom?
No, not this time.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for, for doing what you did, that's not an easy task.
It's no fun.
No, I mean, that's pretty painful.
Hi, Kathy? Oh, question?
Is this department coordinators, or teacher leaders? Just coordinators?
It's sort of all lumped into that.
It's because of the way they list. They list them together in the budget, so that's why they're listed that way here. I'm not trying to avoid answering, I just, I can't remember to break down.
Is there any other questions? Okay.
Now it's me?
No.
So, just to follow up on what Ed said about the building, um, we do plan to start the auditorium the first day in June, June second. And then, the completion for the auditorium will be October first. So, there will be a period of time when school has begun that the auditorium will not, um, be able to be used. And, um, we expect to go out to bid on or about March first.
Could I ask a question, please?
Sure.
Is the auditorium the last thing to finish?
Yes, so, the kitchen has got to be done before the first, you know, first day of school. We can't get in there, um, until school, the last day of school.
Yep.
Um, what programs, no, there's, aren't there some programs, Lynn, during the summer? Are they all Redford Jones Elementary, they use the kitchen over there?
The summer program has already kind of pre-planned that the kitchen will not be available over the summer. And so, our students that will be in programming here will go, will have a little bit longer lunchtime, and we're going to trek over to the elementary school, and all our food will be prepared over there.
Okay.
And we don't have a Mary Johnson program in here this, this summer, so that also eases a little bit of the load.
So, we hope to be out to bid on or about March first, with the bids back on or about April first. We were hoping that we could have a bid period of three weeks. We found out that, um, Vermont statutes require us to have a bid period of thirty days. So, um, so, and hopefully at our April board meeting, the, um, our architects will have done enough due diligence, so at that point, we can, um, approve of a contract with a contractor. Okay. Not done? Oh, okay.
Exciting that this stuff is finally getting started.
Okay, here.
So the board asked me to prepare for this meeting, a projection for FY fourteen. And while some things were easier to project, some things were a little bit more difficult to project. But I'll take you through this once this is all handed out. So looking at revenues, and this is all as of now, and this report includes the, um, bills that we're going to be paying. So as of now, we've received five million, nine hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars in revenues. We have yet to receive, um, the balance of the education fund, and that includes local property taxes as well as the support from the state. Um, one installment of the transportation grant. My best guess as to what special ed reimbursement to be received will be, as well as extraordinary cost. And those are the high-cost students for which we, um, spend more than fifty thousand dollars. Um, drivers ed reimbursement, there's a vocational, uh, transportation reimbursement, and then other miscellaneous revenues, interest, sports, building rental, um, other miscellaneous. Um, so about ten million, forty-three thousand dollars. And actually, I just reminded of when Hannaford was here, you know, they'll give us about sixty thousand. So I'm just going to pencil in sixty thousand here.
It'll be like ten-one.
Yeah. So, um, for next month, Hannaford. Okay. And then, um, what?
Before you move on to expand, so the variances in revenues are what?
Budget.
As opposed to budget, um, higher special ed reimbursements by a little bit. Um, and then also-
Lower, lower.
And then also we have in our budget, um, a carryforward of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that, you know, is really not available for our use. It was used in a prior year. Um, so special ed reimbursements, I'm thinking we're going to get about a million dollars. We budgeted seven hundred and forty-seven thousand. Uh, extraordinary, it looks like it's going to be about right on budget. Uh, transportation grant, I, it looks like we're not going to receive the full amount that I had budgeted. I'd budgeted one twenty-five. I think we're going to get about a hundred thousand. So twenty-five short on that. Um, but the main difference is the four hundred and fifty thousand in the, uh, fund balance carryforward that we've already absorbed. Expenditures to date, so we have paid out six million, six hundred and ninety-five thousand. We've encumbered in salaries and social security and retirement, uh, two million, eighty thousand dollars. And then outstanding, um, so we pay roughly a hundred and three thousand dollars in benefits a month. So there are seven months remaining. So that includes July and August. We have not yet paid Hannaford on the agricultural contract. Um, we have not, uh, there's a tech support salary item that hasn't been paid yet. And I went down through and I just could pick off the easy ones that I knew was an obligation that hadn't been paid yet. So we haven't, um, recorded the state support from the technical center yet. Um, we have a federal grant reinducing some special ed expenses that hasn't been applied yet. So that's sixty-two thousand that will be reimbursed. Additional special ed tuition, um, I think we're going to be paying another three hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars for special ed tuition. Um, and that entire amount is over budget for that line item. Or very close to it.
So are you booking sixty percent of that up top here in special ed reimbursement?
Um, yes. You know, between the, the two-twenty, the extraordinary and the, um, special ed, between both of those. Um, additional special ed costs, and then utilities. And the other program costs, um, were the costs that I, um, I didn't, I don't want to say I didn't make an effort. I, I didn't, um, estimate how much we would be spending in other items. I mean, we certainly have other commitments that we need to make. Um, you know, we have equipment leases and, um, you know, we still have needs for, for education. But I just wanted to make the point that as of not including any of that, which I, I know is not realistic, um, our total expenses are ten million, four-one-four, um, which would make, leave us a deficit as of FY fourteen of three seven, three hundred and seventy-one thousand, plus half of the FY thirteen deficit, F-two-seventy-three, is a total deficit of six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Without considering any other, um, program costs, that would only increase that deficit.
So the FY thirteen deficit that's here will be that two-seventy-three that we didn't pay for this year that we will pass to next year's budget.
The other half, correct.
So we begin to get a glimpse of the starting point for the FY sixteen budget at the very bottom of this page.
Mm-hmm.
And on the revenue side.
Yes. You know, and I'll continue to refine this, you know, every month.
Sure. One of the things I had been getting on my mind is sort of, is there a, a hole-digging death spiral that we're going to fall into here? Um, or is this part of the ebb and flow of deficit cycles? And because you're always waiting a full year before you know what the actual closeout values are, that it just takes a couple of years or three years to go down and back up and down and back up?
I mean, I think it, um, I mean, I really hate to pick on special ed because, um, you know, it seems like it's easy to identify that that's where costs-
They do speak for themselves these numbers.
That there's where costs are going, you know. But between the special ed and the building maintenance, um, you know, it might be a few years before we can get out of this. You know, looking-
It's going to depend upon how aggressively we budget. And as Kathy's pointing out, I think those two areas tend to be the greater expenditures, uh, where we see most of the overruns, especially special ed. And, uh, you know, there's no science to it. A lot of guesswork.
So looking forward for FY fifteen, you know, we've put forward a more responsible maintenance-
This is FY fifteen, right here. Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Right? We've put forward a more responsible maintenance budget. And, um, the special ed budget, um, is aligned more closely with the service plan estimates that we have to give to the state in the fall. So hopefully those two budgets, um, will be a better reflection than, um, the past, than the past budgets. Um, so it's easy to see that, um, you know, whatever we, other costs, if, if those other costs are a hundred thousand a month or fifty thousand a month, March, April, May, June, you know, four more months of expenses, four and a half more months of expenses.
We have, in general, we have mechanisms for dealing with surpluses. We generally return those funds to the community. We don't have a mechanism for dealing with deficits. It's as easily accomplished. Um, one thing I've, one thing I've noticed is, uh, in some districts where they, uh, a surplus is booked to the district as a, as a fund.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and they can then draw on that in tough times and maybe use a part of it, um, to return to voters in a particular year. But it's, it, it's a safer way, I think, to, to, um, move forward, especially when we have situations like we're seeing the last three years.
And I think we've also absorbed large deficits in the past, recent past. However, this year, that with the rate increase, it's really drawing attention to the impact of that. Um, because we've certain, we've certainly seen a roller coaster of deficits and surpluses.
And it will be worse probably in sixteen when the rate goes up seven cents, right?
Yeah. Another seven cents?
Well, it's going up five cents on this budget, right?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven. Okay. I thought for-
And that's-
And they haven't decided that yet.
They haven't decided that yet. That's preliminary.
They'll figure that out.
They're leaning.
Yeah.
Yeah. It might be more than seven cents.
Chicken or egg?
Chicken.
It might be less, it might be more. I mean, that's just a preliminary rate. All right. So let's just look at the printout that accompanies this. So the, the first four pages are the balance sheet. Again, right there on the first page is our general fund. Um, you know, there's our, there's our budget, the first column. Um, so you can compare, you know, where we are. Um, you know, like for instance, interest income, we budgeted forty thousand. You know, with seven months into the year, we have eighty-four hundred, you know. So we're not, we're not going to get to that forty thousand. Um, and then just come, you know. So special ed, budgeted seven forty-seven. So we've received five seventy-eight. I think we probably have another five hundred coming. Then the balance of that is food service and then other accounts that, um, grants, you know, we don't really do much with this until year end. I'm looking at budget to actual. That's the third, fourth page in. So these are expenditures where we can compare, um, actual to budget. And I'll point out a few things. There in the middle of page one, you'll see workers' comp. We've budgeted four hundred and thirteen dollars and it's thirty-six thousand, eight forty-four. That's because that needs to be allocated into every single department. So take care of that before next time. The same with unemployment. That needs to be allocated. Um, the ags, the ag, um, program down at the bottom, we haven't received the bill from Hannaford for that yet. But, you know, we will probably spend all of that that was budgeted. Looking ahead to, I guess we'll jump to page six. And just looking at special ed. So the first item there, teacher salaries, where, where we're over budget by fifty-four thousand dollars. That's the category that the federal idea B grant, um, will be reimbursing the school for, um, one teacher and her benefits. So, so that will be taken care of. Looking at para educator salaries, I estimate that we probably have four or five additional paras than what we had budgeted. Um, student need. Um, but when you come down and look at student transportation, you know, some of those paras are, you know, we're trying to, instead of hiring Betsy to go to Burlington, we're, um, we hired a driver and a, and a para to ride the bus for the students that we're transporting. And hopefully we can save some money there. We should save some money. To use the little special, to use the van. So we have a, a driver and then a para riding on the bus to Burlington with, uh, with some students. Um, Betsy used to charge us five or six thousand a month or more to take the students to Burlington. So we're hoping that we can save some money by doing it ourselves.
So they're driving what bus, the little bus?
The little bus.
Little white van.
Do you need a bus driver's license for that?
Not with the number to consider riding.
Anything five and hundred, I don't need, I don't see you.
Oh, okay. I thought it was the, okay.
Um, and then you'll see the tuition line. So we had budgeted eight hundred and two thousand five hundred dollars. We've spent eight thirty-four. Like I said, I estimate we'll spend three hundred and ninety-one thousand more. Looking at there in the middle of the page, OTP.
Before we move from that- Um, I think it's incumbent upon the board to get some idea of, I understand there's confidential information, but I think we need some context to understand where that additional spending comes from. What's, what's driving that? Um, and is it things that were, you know, completely unknown at the time the budget was put together? Are these new circumstances? It's a, it's a substantial expense and the public is raising reasonable questions. How do we get our hands around these costs? And if we can't answer it tonight, I understand that. But we need to be in a position to be able to speak to that. And I think it would be very helpful to be in a position, excuse me, to speak to that in time for town meeting.
You know, at that kind of money, I think we should at least engage a conversation about bringing a program back into the district. Cause we're tuitioning a lot of kids out now.
Well, we don't, I mean, there's no explanation. There's just three ninety-one.
Well, I just, I understand it as we're tuitioning, kids move in and we have to tuition them to whatever school meets their resource needs. But, you know, in the past, I think there was a program that met a lot, not all, but a lot of those needs.
So I would say that we are seeing needs now that, um, the school currently is not equipped to handle.
It would be, it would be an expensive program to, to start with. And, you know, it depends on what population you're talking about. There are, there are a number of different populations. There's learning impaired population, there's behavior populations, there's, um, other, and there's both. Um, but there's different, such varying populations, she'd have to target one. And the one we targeted, um, a few years ago is really changed. It's, it's tripled or quadrupled. And that's, that's the kids with, uh, you know, mental health issues, which is a, which is a increasingly sizable population.
Well, we can't be the only school that's looking at this. I understand that our expenses are a little higher than others. I don't know whether the comps that we get cover that or not, sort of the special ed expenditures.
Do we have a tracking? I mean, we have all the elementary schools, the middle school, the high school. Do we have any tracking for anticipatory costs as they reach the middle and high school from the elementary school? I know we can't plan for who moves in or who moves out, but-
Well, Sandy Bass and Wayne Howe used to, you know, come over to the, our office in late, uh, May and start telling us about the kids and what we, what they thought we had to deal with. Um, we had similar conversations this last spring. And when Steph showed up, it wasn't so much, can I say this?
You're making it sound like it's my fault.
Yeah, it is. It is your fault. Um, but-
She showed up.
When she showed up, we knew that there was a cadre of kids incoming that were difficult, but we couldn't predict the explosive nature of when they all got together from different schools. And it just, it was, um, it was, you know, we keep using the metaphor, perfect storm, but in that sense it was. And so those kids have been very expensive. Even though we saw them coming, they're, they're more expensive and more problematic than we ever- Even though we saw them coming, they're more expensive and more problematic than we ever were led to believe. So, I mean, it's not like they weren't identified. The other thing that happens that I've never really seen much of it before is the number of kids we find eligible for special ed, sophomore, juniors, and even senior years. I've never been in a school district where so many high school kids are found to be special education eligible at that late age. So we gotta work on our systems. I think, you know, we gotta work on our universal level and our secondary interventions. And we gotta really be serious about them. Because if we start in fifth grade, really holding to, you know, what do you call, multi...
Tiered system.
Multi-tiered system of support, we may be able to lessen the impact to special education kids. Also, if we, it's pretty clear, if we can... If we can diversify our instruction and to a class where we don't, it's not one size fits all. We can start teaching the kids strengths and weaknesses in middle, elementary school and continue it all up through high school. We're gonna reduce our special ed costs because, A, we're not gonna have to test those kids or find them eligible because we'll be doing a better job of teaching them. And that's really what the goal of, I think, everybody here is. Is that, you know, if we differentiate instruction better and earlier, we'll have a better chance with these kids and keeping them off the IEP rules.
That said, I was gonna say, that said, we met with the CSAC people, the director of CSAC, a couple of weeks ago to talk about how to create, sort of implement a, sort of an intermediate step here that's offers a therapeutic component that we just don't have here. Even though we have the clinicians, we have that, some of the schools, these kids really need that therapeutic component along with behavior interventions. And so we're talking about how to bring some of that back here and have CSAC help us.
We're also looking, conversation with CSAC about establishing programs at the elementary level with their involvement, which would be new.
I think in general, you know, the issues that kids are having to deal with these days are significantly different than programs and expertise that has been developed beforehand. If they're out of the district, it's because we can't serve them. In some cases, it's real obvious. In other cases, it's not quite.
But even, we're also sending some kids right down to Middlebury, you know, which isn't in our district, but it's awfully close. And, you know, I mean, can we do what they do for cheaper? Maybe not?
That's a discussion we're having.
Yeah, can there be, well, anyway, we don't have to get into too many details. But Jeff's, I mean, Jeff's right on point. I remember when we talked about the million dollar figure last year, and it couldn't possibly be. And here, you know, we made decisions last year and here it's coming back at one point one-three or whatever, so.
And my point in raising the questions is not to find fault. And I believe we have a supportive community. But what I know is that voters do not respond well to, that's just what it is, it's beyond our control. We need the support of voters and the way to get that is to give them more of a picture of what the challenges are. And I'm trying to envision town meeting coming up and standing up in front of the voters and asking for their support for the budget, acknowledging where the challenges have been. And I would be helped in that effort if I had a better way to describe what's going on. So I'm struggling for help in order to be able to do that. Again, it's not about particular kids or, we just, we need a way to articulate what the challenges are. And my hope is that this will continue to be a supportive community and people will respond well to getting more information.
So Jeff, I think maybe to help that effort, if you knew the resources that we're sending kids out of District Four, you would understand better the issues that the school is facing and why it costs us. So that's something I think we can...
We can sit down with Cara Griswold, who does the best job of explaining in abstract, you know, why the cost, what the cost drivers are. And we can just do that for an hour and I think you'd get a lot of information.
I mean, I think, and I'm not just speaking for myself, there's, everybody's here is going to be facing this issue come town meeting day. And some bullet points that can go along with all the great things we have to talk about and some of the things that are in your report, that are in the annual report. I think we also need to be able to articulate what's going on on this very significant expense item.
The big issue is going to be, there are some things I don't think it would be advisable to discuss and I've already skirted them on TV, for instance. Confidentiality is still a big issue with this.
Understood.
And so, but, you know...
But if we talk about services that are provided by those agencies, whoever they might be, you have a better picture of the issues we're confronting.
No, I understand and I agree with what you want. But all I thought that the question too was, how can we better predict our costs so that we budget properly? And so that's what I was, why I was asking, the carry forward, you know, anticipatory expenses, if it would help us. I mean, we can't budget for the unknown, but if we do have some knowns, can we budget better?
So if we look over the last four years, I think we got into a mode of pinching pennies, if you will, for lack of a better term. And we tried to come up with budgets that were low increases for our taxpayers. And part of that process included perhaps underestimating what we needed for special ed and for other areas as well. Had we been a little more generous in our predictions, then we would have had to deal with a budget that was increasing seven or eight percent and what voters might say about that. So, you know, it's a delicate balance. And when that delicate balance is eroded by expenses you didn't anticipate, you've got the situation we're talking about right now.
Well, for myself, I appreciate the opening of the conversation. It's not, you know, it's not the end, but like Jeff said, I'm certainly not coming guns blazing or anything like that. It's just trying to understand and especially, it's gonna be fun on town meeting, being able to get up and explain everything, so.
So let the world know, we know about this. We need to do something about it. And what we're going to do about it, you know, is gonna, I think we need to start thinking about that now. Well, and start acting on it, you know, after March, rather than waiting until September and saying, oh, okay, there's that million dollars that we, you know, anticipated but didn't know about. So now we're, I think, at least pushing the tiller over, if you will. So.
So we are, Tom has instituted a budget freeze, only necessary expenses. Alright, so then just looking at page ten, I'll just finish, stop looking at maintenance, operations and maintenance. Again, we acknowledge that this is underfunded in some respects. Building repair in the middle of the page, we are already over on that line item by ten thousand three hundred dollars. The repairs and maintenance, not a lot, but we're already over four thousand. Some money in technical services yet to be spent.
So is there the opportunity in this category for instance? Do we end the budget year with the tanks full? Can we not fill the tanks to try to offset some of these costs?
The oil tanks?
Yeah.
Except that we just pulled fifteen thousand dollars of fuel oil out.
Of next year.
Of next year, so if there's any money left, which it has as full as it could be.
And then the following summer, the natural gas line's gonna be here. And if we decide that, that's gonna be a huge savings. If we decide to convert, that's gonna be a really large savings.
The savings will pay for the conversion.
Well, everything in steps.
So is there any way to encumber? If I were to look at this right now, I see twenty-one, twenty-two percent left.
Yep.
In a budget for operations and maintenance, and I can't stop operating or maintaining, you know, a facility. I'm concerned, I'm very concerned, you know? So we can't stop operating or maintaining the facility and we have no place to go to get money to do that. So again, we know early, so we need to do something about it. Obviously, there's nothing you can do in, you know, in a year other than freeze expenditures.
I mean, there are, there are large line items remaining in here.
Yeah, but...
The supply line, technical services line, you know, I don't know when those are gonna be needed, but...
Yeah, but overall, there's more than twenty-two percent of the year left. You know, if you just go on a straight line expenditure, twenty-two percent left and we've got about fifty percent of the year left, right?
Kathy, if I look at this math and let's say, you know, a hundred percent of the workers' comp is left, just so I understand how these budget sheets work. Like if we encumbered that and so there was zero percent left.
It'd move over.
Right, and then that twenty-one percent remaining would not be twenty-one percent remaining anymore.
No.
So I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
A fair representation would be to take the dead fixed costs that we know, the workers' comp, the electricity, and quote unquote, encumber them. Although you can't really call them encumbered until you do it, right?
Well, it creates a lot of work to encumber them, but...
Yeah, I understand. I can do that in my head. But, you know, that's frustrating.
Well...
But it just points out another issue to anticipate. So blended percent remaining is four percent overall.
Um, no, so look on page eleven at the very top, that's the total general fund. It's at the very top there.
Oh, eleven, eleven percent.
You know, a million one.
Five months.
And then some expenses, like I said, here are seven months, benefits.
And so that plays out to the five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar deficit. Because I already took the Hanaford and put it in there.
Well, I mean, I, just looking at some of the expenses I see here, the transportation money to Ferrisburg and Waltham, a hundred and twenty that's budgeted, that should come over here, that's our required expenditure.
Yeah.
You know, so...
I'm not looking for ways to make it look worse.
Well, in the interest of full disclosure... Any other questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Your job is thankless these days, huh?
I don't know, we thank Kathy all the time.
No, I know, and well deserved as well, but it is, I guess I mean it's a tough job being a bearer of tough tidings.
So anything else from the business manager?
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we've heard enough about the Hanaford Career Center tonight, unless anyone has any other comments or questions. Just another forewarning, you know, after we, after March, you know, we'll be looking for a new person to take over our representation at the Hanaford Center. So I don't intend to continue to do that. So not only will we need to elect an at-large person, we will also need to, one of the board members will need to represent us at Hanaford. Anything else in reports from anyone that we've already heard from? Okay, business matters.
I have bills here in the amount of three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-two cents.
There's a motion on the floor to approve three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-two cents in a second. Is there any discussion?
Any questions about...
I have any questions?
Jeff or Michelle, Neil?
If you're comfortable putting that.
Anything larger than others?
Not anything that looked any different than any other times.
Okay.
Or that wasn't unexpected, you know, like Jeff, okay, we're obviously spending a lot of money on special education. So I saw that line, you know, for a variety of things, but it fit with what I know.
Yep. Okay. Any other discussion? Tia, do you have any questions or no? Never know. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Or abstention? Great. We don't have, we had some policy matters.
We had intended to have the wellness and internet policy, acceptable use policy. I'm not prepared with those, we'll have them for March.
Okay. March or April? March, okay. Any personnel issues or concerns? Any, no? Next is a discussion item for the planning for the annual and budget information meeting. Is this a good time to talk about the frequently asked questions? Over the, for those of you who don't know, we've had a collaborative effort to put together detailed information about the fiscal year 2015 budget. And it started out as a discussion that we were going to put into the annual report. And Neil did such a great job in the beginning of drafting it that we decided that it would be better used as a document that we can bring to meetings, you know, town meetings or other types of meetings. We saw that it fit rather nicely into a local synopsis of what the state school board association put together, a two-page document that's available at the vsba.org. So that gives you, if you look at that, if you haven't looked at it, please do. But that gives you a good idea of what's going on at the state. And there was a discussion on Vermont Public Radio last week where those points were made public by Steve Dale, who's the director of the VSBA. So this would be a natural extension of that document and I hope would give those of you who are going to be talking at the town meetings information to answer questions. Not sure what the venue is. Does anyone put together a formal presentation for these meetings or...
It's not, that wouldn't be suitable for Virgin's town meeting.
Okay.
Typically, you get five minutes to get up and speak.
Okay, how about at Waltham?
It's same situation, probably five minutes.
Okay.
Moreover, the, Virgin's town meeting is, has very light attendance. It's important to be there. I'll be there. I'll speak on behalf of that, but we might get forty or fifty people in there. All of whom will be motivated to go and vote, obviously. But that's the maximum I've ever seen.
Okay.
Yeah, I did it even, the vast majority of them that are there are there because they are representing...
they are representing some other group that's asking for money or need something else. They're not there because, they're there to collect information necessarily.
Okay. And how about Addison?
We usually have quite a few people come to the town meeting, but school board will speak last. How many people stay would be, you know, for a later presentation, but I do have a slideshow I'm putting together.
And that's more from the Addison Central School. Like, I've experienced with that at Ferrisburg. You know, basically, town meeting takes place, they have a break for lunch, and like, three people stay for the school meeting, so.
Well, ours is at night, voting would be the next day. But we've never had anybody really come and speak about the high school budget, really. If they do ask questions, I will refer to.
Okay. And then, what, I've never been to an annual and budget information meeting for the high school, so what kind of, what kind of public should we anticipate?
It is a very confusing meeting, because it's fundamentally a meeting of a different board than this board.
You guys don't do those in Ferrisburg?
The school district meeting?
Yes.
We have an informational, we had an informational meeting.
Right. And then, followed by the school district meeting. Right?
No?
No, you didn't do those in Ferrisburg? They're, I never-
We have a meeting that has a guide, and people have to read different things out of it, and elect some certain rules, and then, we finally at the end get to talk about the budget, but.
It's essentially a meeting to go through the warning.
Part of that includes the information.
Exactly.
There's a clerk, which is different than Neil.
Right.
And a moderator.
Is that Jay?
That's Jay. That's why Jay is the ballot verifier.
Okay.
Because he's the elected clerk. That's why we elect Barb as treasurer.
Same thing at Ferrisburg, Kurt.
Yeah, okay. So, but what's gonna happen for the high school? And when we have our annual and budget information meeting?
Well, should we put together a presentation based on this fact?
We certainly can.
And we can do this. One piece we could also add is, I really like that breakout of the budget components, which I realize should be part of this too, but it's not right now.
Okay.
This is about the pressures.
So, in the meeting, you'll read the warning, and you'll be voting on, what is it, like, the boards, who are you voting, voting in a treasurer, right?
Yep.
Isn't it, it's in here.
Yeah.
From last year's.
Yeah, I read, read this, but I'm like, I'm just trying to get an idea of whether it's well attended, or-
No.
Those of you in Ferrisburg know, the Ferrisburg meetings usually, Don Bicknell would show up, and my mother, so, you know, that would be it.
The high school, no, there's not a lot of people here.
Okay.
Half a dozen maybe.
What's that? Okay. No, I mean, so. Yeah?
This meeting?
We're talking about the informational meeting.
Information. It's at night, it's at 6:30. It used to be at eight?
Yeah.
No, eight at night.
So, this one was at 6:35.
I mean, it is lightly attended, but, you know, if we have a presentation put together, we can also put that presentation in a PDF up on the website.
Yeah.
Accompany this budget fact, send it out as a did you know in the parent news, and so forth. Thank you, please.
Okay. So, it looks like I did attend this last year, just don't remember it.
I thought you were there.
Okay. Well, what do we, I can put together a presentation, that's no problem. Take that responsibility, take that action item.
Thanks.
And then, post it with this on the vergens, or vuhs.org.
Kathy and I are gonna do a final tweet to it before we leave tonight.
Okay. Just send me a final, and I'll put together a presentation. Do we need to prepare anything else?
I'd like the, I'd like the board's permission, acknowledgement, okay, to get this out via any number of social media approaches. I think we could put it on Front Porch Forum with a pointer to our website. We could put it on Facebook, whoever has Facebook pages, for people who pay attention, that way. Point to our website. You know, it's not as conventional, but it certainly seemed effective when we were working on the bond, and it is an appropriate way to talk to people these days.
Yeah, I'll take care of that on Front Page Forum, you can take care of Facebook.
Well, I'll do a Front Page on Vergens, you do Ferrisburg.
Okay.
So, Neil, if you do a PowerPoint based on this, you'd be putting that on the websites also.
Yeah. Kirk just volunteered to do that, but yes. I mean, and that budget breakout is easy enough, because it's just the page 21 piece. Or page 21 of whatever page that is.
So, is there any reason to start a blog, or?
Oh, no.
Is there any reason to use any other type of push or pull internet?
Well, when we say put it on the website, do we mean the blog that we started for the bond?
No.
Any reason not to use that as well, or?
It's wildly un-
Subscribed.
Undersubscribed.
Undersubscribed. We may have had 20 at the most at Reddit.
Okay.
A blog, to me, is an interactive communication device, and there was no interaction, other than people read, and we posted. I had hoped that there would be a conversation. So, you can get that same kind of, that same kind of interaction if people are just gonna read it by posting it on the website. So, websites are presentation, right? You add forums or blogs.
Right.
And those are interactive. So, but, you know, if all we need to do is present the information, that's fine.
I'd like to ask whoever manages the school's website, if we could get this in a fairly prominent spot.
Yep.
As opposed to, you know, sometimes it's easiest to add something to the bottom, and it would be nice to just put it right there. So, if somebody hits Front Porch Forum and say, oh, I wanna see that, and they click the thing, boom, it is right there for them.
Yeah. So, I'll use the URL for the report itself.
Right.
In the, in Front Porch Forum.
Right.
The actual presentation HTML that goes on the website has to be, you know, in a position to be seen.
That's exactly what I'm saying. I don't know if that's Tom Heller or whomever, but.
Yeah.
So, just to be clear, Neil, are we talking about the PowerPoint that Kurt is gonna put together along with this document?
Yep. And there'll also be a pointer, this document points to the VSBA statewide frequently asked questions document, or we can bring that forward, we can grab that PDF and just hang it on our website, either way. Yeah? Okay. Yeah, so we don't spit people out.
Yep.
That's a good idea.
Okay. So, three items on VUHS. I thought I said sick people over there.
I don't think you've ever had in my entire life.
Okay. So, three, three links on vuhs.org. Anything else? Elect the officers, hear and act on their reports, establish salaries, authorize to borrow money, and transact any other business.
Is there a meeting on the 24th of February? It was something that was rescheduled. Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because it was-
That's a district meeting, the 24th?
It wasn't listed down here with all the other ones.
That's for interviewing the superintendent candidate.
Okay.
That's internal.
So, since Peter is no longer a principal here, do we anticipate that he's gonna wanna be moderator for the annual meeting? Or do we know who will?
He does not live in this town, or in this district.
Okay.
Who's the one that's in?
It's in Addison.
Oh, he doesn't live in Bristol?
I moved to Addison two years ago.
Oh, oh, okay.
So, do we, do we have any responsibility for having candidates, or is that usually done by someone else?
We need to make sure someone's going to fear that.
I can moderate the meeting if it's, if there needs to be a fallback moderator.
We could probably give Peter a call and find out if he's still-
Okay. That's what I was asking.
Yeah.
So, no one has, specifically has responsibility for making sure that there is candidates? There's no nomination committee or anything like that?
No.
Okay. I just didn't wanna step on any toes.
Christina just left, we can ask her.
She wanted to do it.
Are any of you three going to do it? No?
Then you pick a moderator.
Okay. If nobody's here can do it, I can cover it, because I don't have a responsibility as a board member at that meeting, so.
But we anticipate that Jay is gonna be the clerk?
He's done a great job with that.
And that, do we know if Barbara McDonald is planning to be the treasurer?
She probably will.
Yes? So, we just need a moderator? Okay. You will? Oh.
He's really good at it.
Good.
Yeah.
I've done it before.
No, Peter's really good at it.
You could call Dawn as well, you know, Dawn would probably do it.
You're good at calling him.
Don Bicknell?
Don Jokum.
He's a gentleman that used to do such a good job of it. He was a board member for a long time.
I'd just like to have it planned out, so that, you know, we're not reactive.
It was Ian Sullivan that did it for a long time.
Well, Dennis used to do, yeah, he used to present the budget.
Dennis Mueller.
Yes, Dennis Mueller. Yeah, he was very good at it. He understood the process.
Anything else we need to do to plan for the annual meeting, or informational meetings, or town meetings?
This is Lori's last meeting?
What's that?
Is this your last meeting?
No, I'll be at the annual meeting.
The annual meeting, okay.
Not yet.
Jeff, do you feel comfortable with what you're getting, or? I know you asked for more information. I didn't feel like we decided to do anything there, or are we in it?
The special ed is what I didn't hear, how, putting anything together for that, and that's a pretty good idea. So, even just some bullet points that we can have in a back pocket, right?
Where would we get that? Gentlemen, ladies?
I'm sorry.
Can I have your attention?
Yep.
Where would we get the bullet points that Jeff was asking for about?
That's what we were just-
Oh, okay.
Start that process tomorrow.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, that'll be distributed?
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Just wanted to throw up a choke, so I guess I got time.
Before we adjourn, are you getting ready to adjourn?
No, no.
Oh, really?
You'd like me to, wouldn't you?
Oh, we might need an exact session.
Yeah. So, does anybody else need anything to be, so that they feel comfortable going in front of the public, either at the informational meeting, the annual meetings, or the town meetings? No? All set? Okay. Thank you. Is there a need for executive session today?
There's no.
Okay. The next meeting for the annual and budget information meeting is on February 25th. The night before that, February 24th, there's a meet and greet, or, you wanna talk about that, Jeff?
Sure. Just briefly, that'll be February 24th at 3:30. There'll be community sessions in the library and cafeteria.
Yes.
Beginning at 3:30 with candidates for the superintendent.
We're gonna have mixed teachers and public together. We'll have the opportunity to participate in the community forum.
Great.
I saw there was one little thing in the Addison, and kind of something else, had something else on in there, or was something else?
There will be something else.
Because it did say there'd be information coming.
That'd be a good one to get out from Front Porch Forum. There, we'll go there.
Christina Macaulay will be in charge of that.
Oh, right, okay. Committee is doing committee's thing, you guys have got it.
Yep.
Thank you very much for your work.
Yeah, that's why I pointed to Jeff.
Yep.
So, February 24th is that exciting event. The 25th is the annual budget information meeting, and then, March 10th, the regular board meeting, and the 26th, the supervisory union board meeting. So, those are the upcoming meetings, if there's nothing else, then I would suggest that we adjourn. Thank you very much.